Welcome to Oviedo City Hall. It's about 6:30 PM. If everybody can rise and pledge allegiance, please. And this evening, we're going to introduce our new IT Director for the City of Oviedo, Michael Koushai. Michael, where are you? Why don't you come on up and lead us in the pledge? Put you right on the spot. Michael, where do you join us from?
I join you from Marriott. I've been at the Gaylord Palms for the last sixteen years.
Great. So IT for the last sixteen years?
Thirteen years, yes.
Excellent. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Go yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael. Again, welcome.
Thank you.
We do not have Chief White with us this evening, so if everybody can just join me in a moment of silence this afternoon. Chief White is not here. One of our firefighters, I've been asked twice today why the flags are half-staffed around the city. One of our firefighters, Tim Sashi, last week passed very unexpectedly, way too young. And today was the day of his funeral. So just let's have a moment of silence and we'll keep Tim and his family in our purse. Thank you. Alrighty. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. It is approximately 6:35 or so PM. We have all members of council present this evening. Our first order of business ceremonial item, and it is Students Working Against Tobacco. So where are you guys? Why don't you come on up to the podium? Are we waiting for somebody? Do I see more people coming in?
You do.
Why don't you guys have a seat a second? I have a proclamation I can read, and then we'll get, switch over to you, okay? That way you can get everybody all together. Alrighty, we're going to just switch this up a little bit. We're going to go on to item number two, and appropriately after that announcement I made, we have proclamation for National EMS Week. And that proclamation reads, "Whereas the City of Oviedo Fire Rescue Department provides lifesaving prehospital emergency medical advanced life support care to the citizens and visitors of the City of Oviedo in accordance with state and local medical protocols responding to over 2,700 emergency medical calls annually." That's just in the city limits, folks. Twenty-seven hundred. "Whereas access to quality and timely prehospital emergency medical advanced life support dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury." And "Whereas the City of Oviedo Fire Rescue Department retains an excellent customer service satisfaction rating, consistent zero deficiency grading from the State of Florida Department of Health Bureau and EMS. And whereas the City of Oviedo Fire Rescue Department has adopted a vision among its members that reads, 'Serve with honor, serve with respect, serve with excellence.'" Excellence, excuse me. "And whereas the Oviedo City Council hereby joins the nation in recognizing this year's National Emergency Medical Services Week theme, EMS Strong and Always in Service, and by incorporating technology, protocols, and advanced training to assure for the finest EMS service delivery for the Oviedo community." Now therefore, I Dominic for San Pierre, Mayor of the City of Oviedo, Florida, do hereby proclaim, May 21st through May 27th, 2017, as National Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Oviedo, Florida. And in witness, I will put my signature on this proclamation. I'll pass it down to the clerk. And Barbara, if we can get this over to the chief, that would be terrific. Thank you. Alrighty, so now, are you guys ready? Alright, so now we're going to backtrack, and we're going to go to our first ceremonial item, which was Students Working Against Tobacco. It's known as SWAT. And everyone pay attention to what these kids do, because they came in last year and gave us a similar presentation, and it's quite impressive. So come on up, guys. You're on your own. Don't look back there at your teachers.
I need a little guidance sometimes.
Don't worry, it's just us and the studio audience at home.
So, hi, my name is Nicole Jimenez. I am the President of Tusamino County Students Working Against Tobacco. Today, we have Kyla, David, Victoria, and Jemaya presenting today. And today, we are talking about why the retail environment matters, the point-of-sale issue.
Is there like a clicker or something?
Just kind of aim it at the, there you go.
The line.
Linda, looks like you're going to drive.
Yeah, thank you.
Just tell her next slide.
Next slide, please. And this is our SWAT mission statement.
SWAT is a Florida statewide youth organization working to mobilize, educate, and equip Florida youth to revolt against and deglamorize big tobacco. SWAT is a united movement of empowered youth working towards a tobacco-free future.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Today, we will be talking about why POS matters, fixing the problem at POS, what are we, what we are doing about it in Florida, how the City of Oviedo can help. Now we have Victoria explaining why POS matters.
What is point-of-sale and why the retail environment matters? I need the next slide. Tobacco is still the leading cause of preventable death in the world. Worldwide, six million people die from smoking and secondhand smoking a year. In the United States, 480,000 people die from secondhand smoking and smoking a year. Florida, by itself, 32,300 people die from their own smoking. Excuse me. This is how it works. If you think of a retail store like a convenience store, it looks pretty innocent, but the truth is different. Big tobacco companies know that there are few or no restrictions applied in the cell of tobacco. So they pay billions of dollars on big tobacco. Well, or what do you say? Next slide.
Big tobacco also knows youth, like me, exposed to tobacco advertisement is more likely to sell their deadly products. In fact, nine out of ten smokers start by the age eighteen, in their own words, based of our businesses, is in the high school student. Also, two out of three kids visit the convenience store at least once a week.
Next slide again, sorry. Now we'll be presenting a video that demonstrates everything that we just talked about, which I think is quite effective.
We showed these kids some products purchased at a nearby store and asked them what they thought.
Ooh, this is cool.
We picked up the same thing.
What they didn't know is that each one was a tobacco product.
Oh, I think it's grape. I see that right there.
And look at mine.
It smells like gum.
Yummy.
This one looks super cool.
Ooh, this is pretty.
It smells like strawberry.
I'll say these are my favorite.
Blueberries.
Animals.
Got two animals, animals.
Are these mints?
Hey, look at this one.
The tobacco industry spends nearly $1 million an hour marketing its addictive and deadly products.
Pink is one of my favorite colors.
With brightly colored packaging and fruit and candy flavors that kids love, who do you think they're targeting?
Could I have one?
How about we each get two?
We found them now.
We get to keep them.
I will now pass around a basket, and I hope that you notice the difference, because not a lot of people.
So those are tobacco products that are packaged to look like candy?
Yes. They said, "Yeah, you can't tell what candy was in it." It's one of the baskets.
Yeah.
Next, David will present the reasons why the retail environment matters.
There are four main reasons why you should be concerned about tobacco in retail environments, but we're going to explain three. The amount big tobacco spends on marketing promotions and advertising. Next slide. I'm talking about stores like convenience stores, gas stations, grocery stores, and pharmacies, and more. This is a picture of a power wall. This is what catches the youth's eye, filled with very bright colored packaging, which will catch basically every children's eye when you walk into like any store. There are four types of marketing: price, product placement, and promotion. Next slide. Eight-point-one billion, well, big tobacco spends eight-point-one billion dollars a year on price discounts and promotional allowances to retailers, 68 million a year on advertising, and 240 million a year on coupons. Think of it this way: big tobacco spends most of their money in retail environments. They spend over a million an hour only on point-of-sale. Now, Kyla will explain the second reason.
The second reason tobacco marketing charges make you start using tobacco. Next slide, please. As you can see up here is tobacco advertisement outside a convenience store. And as you see, Flushed Puppy is next to the tobacco advertisements. And this is shown to youth on their way to school or even to church. Next. Here you can see an interior tobacco product display of a price discount of 75% off. This is what young people like me are shown to on the daily. As you can see up there, the candy is right next to the e-cigarettes, and this is very attractive to young children who like candy. Exposure to in-store marketing linked to tobacco use initiation. Exposure associated with causal factors of increased odds of ever-smoking, experimental smoking initiation, and higher likelihood of becoming a daily or occasional smoker. Now Nicole will tell you the third reason why retail environments market.
Thank you. The third reason is the difficulty of attempting to quit smoking. Next slide, please. When you come to work or when you're leaving from work, you may not or have seen all of these advertisements. It's not so, it's in a way of a background, it's kind of in your mind a subsetting. Next slide. A study was done in 2008 with 600 Australian workers, Australian smokers who had recent, or recently tried to quit smoking. Seventy-five percent of smokers noticed the displays. Thirty-eight percent said it gave them the urge to buy cigarettes. And 61 out of the 38% actually bought cigarettes even though they were trying to quit smoking. Tobacco advertisements, for adults, maintain, oh, sorry. Tobacco advertisements are in a way trying to not let the adults make healthy choices with their life. Now Ms. Debbie will discuss what can be done.
I'm not sure how I got in this group of great young adults, but I did, and I support them several hundred percent, and it's, thank you for listening to us. So they've already explained to you how tobacco advertisements target a specific group and population, and it makes adults even more difficult for them to quit and with, from these deadly products. And the lives that we're losing locally and worldwide from diseases that can be prevented, and I'm sure that everyone in this room knows someone that has lost their life because of tobacco or nicotine in that sense. So now we're going to talk about what we can do to take care of this, or what you can do to help us to take care of this. If you look at the slide, you'll see that tobacco retailing, retailer licensing is a way to prevent some of these things to happen. Licensing is like a binder, it holds all tobacco control policies inside of it. And all your tobacco control laws can be enforced through this TRL ordinance. All tobacco control policies can be found in following domains. One would be reducing or restricting the number of licenses, local density and types of tobacco retail outlets. Two, to increase the cost of tobacco products through non-taxable, through non-tax approaches. Three, implementing prevention and sensation messaging, which the Department of Health offers all over the state of Florida. Also, restricting point-of-sale advertising, which is what the youth have been talking about, where the products are located. And then restricting the product placement. Other items may be also with the flavor, the minimum package size, and our raising the legal sale age in that sense. And those can be enforced through a tobacco retail licensing, licensing, I'm sorry. And then, this will help ensure the retailers to understand that this is a privilege that they're selling. This is, they're not owed, or it's not a right that they have to be able to sell to youth, okay? The basic components of an effective licensing system. I think we went, ah, thank you. All retailers must obtain a non-transferable license renewed annually, which is similar to your alcohol licenses, if I'm not incorrect in saying that. The license fee covers administration enforcement costs, because if you're going to have some rules or regulations, it's going to cost for enforcement, and this would help cover those fees. Violating any tobacco control laws is a violation of this license, and the penalties could be suspension or recavation of this license, same as alcohol in any of those sense in retailers. So the youth are going to give you some examples of this. Thank you.
Americans not smokers, right stated. Pharmacies are a source of health. Why not have tobacco-free pharmacies? I personally suffer from asthma, and it does not make any sense for me to have to walk into pharmacies and see things that can cure my asthma but also trigger it.
As you can see above, the blue dots represent the schools in Oviedo, and the green areas represent the parks, and the orange areas represent the retailers in that area. If the policy was affected, if the policy was enforced, retailers would be affected by the 500-feet pink shaded area, and this would help a lot of kids.
In 2013, SWAT members presented a resolution supporting steps taken to limit youth access to flavored tobacco in the products. Minneapolis, Minnesota, 2015 banned the sale of flavored tobacco products in convenience stores. Ms. Debbie will explain what we have done, currently doing in the POS issue.
They let me sit down because I'm older. You can go. Okay, fixing the problem in Florida, what are we doing about it? Already, Oviedo has taken the first step to making their city a healthier place to live, to work, and to play. And that is a very, very huge step in that, and I applaud, especially with adding the electronic cigarettes to that, because many people believe that the electronic cigarettes are, help you stop smoking. And I'm an ex-smoker and can tell you that that would not have stopped me. Fortunately, other things did. But in addition, the whole state of Florida is moving forward to providing resources to support these initiatives to prevent youth to be exposed to tobacco advertisements in the retail environment. I'm sure you've seen advertisements on TV, the commercials from Tobacco Free Florida, which is money that came down from the lawsuits from tobacco agencies, so. Next slide, please. If you look at your Florida mapper, this is a great way to see the different outlet and retails in the state of Florida. And this, kind, if you look, I mean, look at our area, just central Florida, and the different, there's some white areas and that kind of thing. So with you all taking the first step to help out, that's a major, major ordeal. The link to the map is on the screen, and the public can access this, so that, I know it's kind of hard maybe for you to see, you know, this big, but I would say to you, please take time to look at it. Now, the mapper is made possible from store assessments. And what this is, is that youth will go around, and if you look on the right-hand side of this, or the screen, you'll see the different things that they go. They go to store types, exterior ads, availability, all tobacco products, alcohol flavored, because this is done with alcohol, so pharmacy counters, the price of the cheapest cigarette pack to almost the most expensive, and the rest of those. And these are questions that are given to them and put together specifically to give the information to track the different retailers that are selling or not selling, and how the products, and the point-of-sale, which is why the youth are here today, is point-of-sale. The questions on the survey, like I said, were strategically put there for the youth, and they use youth to go around because they want their views rather than an adult's view to see how they are attracted to it. Now I challenge every one of you, and all of you in the back, when you leave, either today or tomorrow, at some point, when you go into a convenience store, a grocery store, retail, whatever it is, to look around and to view, to see what you can see in that situation. You see up here, we've got a road, we have data that we've given you, and there's more when you look at the mapper, and changes ahead. The City of Oviedo has already made a huge step in that process. And now that you have the data to help you go even further, I think I'm going to let the youth finish on how they can do that. And thank you very much for allowing them to come and listen to them, because you know they all are our future.
As you know, tobacco isn't finished. Victoria mentioned that this is a preventable death. That means those 32,300 people that die in Florida can be saved. This can be, what's it called, avented or, you know, not done. So, next slide, please. I completely support Ms. Debbie's explanation of when you go into these gas stations and into these locations, everything that we've mentioned is, there's evidence in all of these places that you can obviously see if you go into a C store, a convenience store, or a gas station. It's all around you, it's all around us. I'm trying to save people that are in my generation that I know can become greater and better things by not going down this type of road. Next slide, please. So I hope that you would join our Tobacco Free Seminole Coalition. We have a meeting next Wednesday, August 2nd, or not, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, cool, I'm right. And I personally invite you to our bowling event, which is next Friday, May 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. All the information and all our resources, including the Florida map, is located inside the folders that we've given you. I hope that you take these resources and pass them around if you have children or any type of youth that you know, that you let them know what we're trying to do, and hopefully they'll join us. I thank you for your time today and letting us speak to you. This is a great experience for all of us. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from council? No. Very impressive bunch of kids you have here, Mayor. Good, great job, and we appreciate all the information, and just like we did last year, the chief is always on the lookout for different ways to help, so that would be your best point of contact to start with. And he likes enforcing laws, or, and making new ones up, it's like in his nature, but, you know, we'll gladly do anything that we can to help, and as we've proven before in the past.
Yeah.
If you have a resolution or you need some support from us, please just send it along.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. You did a great job.
You guys should be proud of yourselves, find young leaders, people that we need down the road when we get old. So take care of us, so good job.
Do our best.
Thank you. You have a wonderful role model over there, Ms. Owens. When I moved into my old house 18 years ago, she lived across the street from me.
She still lives there.
She's a wonderful person.
She is.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anything else, Matt?
What I would like to say is that I am not really responsible for how well these youth did, and I'm not even responsible for the information that I gave you tonight. Ms. Patricia is, and she actually is the sponsor of SWAT, works with the Department of Health and Tobacco Free Seminole. And she, I'm honored to be invited. I am the Director of Summer Prevention Coalition, which is the prevention of underage drinking, substance abuse, marijuana, and tobacco. The chief, I work very closely with him. This is a great organization, this city, this county. But it's, I really, I'd love to take credit, but I appreciate it.
Really, great job. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
She's out. You guys can either stay, or if you want to leave, I can take a break for a second here, we'll adjourn for a moment, we'll let the kids kind of clear out, and then we'll reconvene.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And chief is coming out. Alrighty, well, that, as I said, was going to be very impressive, and always is each and every year. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for our May 1st, 2017 regular session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so. Oh, who to approve the minutes? Second. Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're up to our public comment portion of the meeting. This is for any item that's not on the agenda that anybody would like to address us on. I do have one written request, it's from Lori Cooper. Ms. Cooper, please come on up. We just need your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Good evening, thank you for a moment. My name is Lori Cooper. I live at 21 Lawn Street, Oviedo, 32765.
Thank you.
This past Saturday's concert on the park was extremely loud, and it went on for about six hours. And the later it got, the louder it got. This has been an ongoing problem, and you all have heard from me about this before. But it was recommended to me that I come here, so this is my last-ditch effort. My question to council is, have you, are you, will you investigate a way to reduce that noise so that the rest of the citizens of Oviedo who are not attending these shows can get some peace?
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Alrighty, we will bring that up with staff and see what can be done. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening is items five, six, seven, and eight. Would it's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve that presented.
Second. Motion second, any discussion?
Nope. Looks good.
Hearing none?
If I could just, oh, hearing none, or are we going down the road?
Uh, Bob? I don't have anything. Okay, good.
Just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Boop and Mr. Cobb, for answering a bunch of questions the last little bit on some of these issues. For sake of consistency, they were able to show that there was an actual check cut back from the Twin Rivers acquisition, which makes me happy. So I just want to be sure I'm on the record, paying attention to that still.
Great. Councilman Britt, anything? Nope. Alrighty, hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we have no public hearings, no first reading of ordinances. Gentlemen, you're all done. You're good. So congratulations.
Thank you.
It's been a long road to set up Oviedo Wine Market. So when's the grand opening?
We're having our second year anniversary on June 30th.
Good for you.
Me and all of our people from up in Birmingham, the owners of the building, are coming down to celebrate with us.
Well, just let us know, and we'll come on out there as well.
All right. Thank you so much.
Good luck to you.
And I'll see you in the morning. Alrighty, as I was saying, we have no public hearings, no first reading of ordinances, but however, we do have a resolution this evening, and it's number 3422-17. Give me a moment here and just get my computer to catch up, and we will see what this one's all about. Alrighty, this is site development order number 477-17, and architectural design order number 017-17 for Your Oviedo Dentist. Mr. Boop, our stand-in city manager this evening. The title fits you well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to approve site development order number 477-17, and architectural design order number 07017-17 for Your Oviedo Dentist Development. The proposed development is located on the east side of Oviedo Boulevard, approximately 2,500 feet, 2,500 feet north of Mitchell Hammock Road. The total land area is 1.92 acres.
The total land area is 1.92 acres. The subject property is designated as downtown mixed-use on the city's future land use map and mixed-use district, Division Street on the city's official zoning map. The applicant proposes the construction of 6,125 square feet of dental office and 1,578 square feet for future office use. A total of 49 parking spaces will be provided. The proposed building design follows a modern aesthetic character that incorporates clean lines, plenty of transparency with natural light, and provides a roof lift-top along the west elevation to capture natural light from the north. Applicant proposes fenestration and material deviations to the north, south, and west elevations. The site is surrounded by residential uses along the north, south, and east boundaries. The applicant is requesting buffer composition and buffer width deviations along the property boundaries. Additionally, due to the limited view from Oviedo Boulevard, the applicant is requesting a buffer composition deviation along the west side of the property to allow more visibility from the right-of-way. The buffer width deviations are from the north, 20 feet, from the south, 10 feet, and again from the south, another 20 feet. As mitigation, the applicant proposes to plant four and 4.5-inch caliper large trees along said buffers. Given the geometry of the site, narrow and long, the buffer deviations requested were considered to be minimum possible to accommodate the required parking. Tree composition deviations from the north, as mitigation, the applicant proposes to plant four 4.5-inch caliper trees along buffers. Additionally, the applicant shall pay into the city's tree bank an amount equivalent to the cost of installation of the missing small and medium trees of $1,100. To the south, as mitigation, the applicant proposes to plant four-inch and 4.5-inch caliper trees along the buffers. Additionally, the applicant shall pay into the city's tree bank an amount equivalent to the cost of installation of the missing small and medium trees totaling $1,200. Architectural design deviations to the west elevation primary of Oviedo Boulevard. A 143-square-foot deviation to the requirement that requires windows and/or openings shall occupy a minimum of 30% or 264 square feet of the area of the ground level of the primary facade or facades and a front that front a street, park, plaza, or on-site courtyard to allow 121 square feet of fenestration on a primary facade. There are two exam operatory rooms, one of which is a private oral sedation room. The applicant complies with the mitigation required by the LDC Article 8 as described below. Deviations above 50% relating to Article 8 shall require three mitigation techniques. The three mitigations provided by the applicant are following. Use of environmentally friendly design practices. The development proposes environmentally friendly lighting design by providing solar tubes that provides natural light inside the building. Health design solutions. The development proposes additional bicycle racks and a bench on-site for public use. Use of environmentally friendly design practices. The development proposes high-efficiency LED lighting on-site. Staff recommends approval of site development order 477-17 and architectural design order number 007-17 with the following conditions. The applicant shall pay the amount of $7,800 to the city's tree fund for the mitigation of 52 replacement large trees. The applicant shall pay the amount of $2,300 to the city's tree fund and lieu of planting 23 small, medium trees along the north and south buffers. The site, lab aggregation applicant must be approved and issued prior to the issuance of a building permit. It is recommended that the city council adopt resolution number 3422-17. And here to assist with any questions is Dr. Korea.
Thanks, Jerry. The applicant is present, do you have a presentation, or introductions, or what would you like?
I do have some imagery I'd like to present.
Sure.
Is it possible to put it on the screen?
It's going to take us a minute to put it on the screen, because that has to be usually sent in earlier. Has that already been cleared?
But there is imagery that happens to meet with the city. It's not in the package.
So we have it in our packages? Is it in our package already, Dr. Korea? Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry, the IT director, they don't allow anything from the outside.
I understand. I don't want to cause any trouble here.
Usually the USBs get sent in a little bit earlier, they scan them and load them.
Do they want to bring in the board, the stand-up board?
We have the stand-up board, if he just wants to show the architecture.
Is it attachment board? Is that what, so we have?
And you do have it, right? I just wanted to reference it on the screen, just to...
Yeah, we'll bring it in here as well.
Okay.
Give us just a second.
Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Fielding W. Featherston. I am the architect and owner of Process Architecture LLC in Orlando. We are the architects for the Your Oviedo Dentist project. Thank you for hearing our case this evening, and we are here to offer any answers or clarifications to any questions you might have. Additionally, I would like to address the architectural deviation that we are requesting consideration for this evening, and that would be with regards to fenestration on the west elevation, the one you see here to the right, which faces Oviedo Boulevard. I assume that, given the package that you're presenting on the screen, you have access to this imagery in front of you in addition to site and building plan information, is that correct? Okay, great. You're already familiar with the unique geometry of the site, and I will discuss that momentarily. One thing that I did want to, an idea that I did want to introduce to city council is sort of the impetus of the project, which Your Oviedo Dentist came to us and requested that we design a structure, a modern structure, that was evocative of their practice, a practice that uses many advanced technologies with regards to dental care and with regards to their brand and their imagery, or, excuse me, their brand and the services that they offer. They requested a building, an architecture that was evocative of that brand, that supported that brand. So it was our obligation as architects to create a building, an architecture, that supported their business and that supported the business's long-term performance. So we have taken the direction of the architecture in a modern direction, a contemporary direction that you see before you. And another interesting characteristic of this architecture is the site on which it sits. It is a very long and skinny site with the narrow end on Oviedo Boulevard. And an important value to us in designing this project was the patient experience. And as far as we are concerned, that experience begins at the street. Dental work is already anxiety-inducing enough for many people, and our goal was to make that process of visiting the site, of accessing the site, as simple as possible. And given the unique characteristics of the site, and what I mean again is the site geometry, the narrow presence on the street, we wanted to provide for an architecture, or, excuse me, we wanted to provide an architecture that would also act as wayfinding for visiting patients, an architecture that would have a presence on the street that would provide notice of the building and approach from Oviedo Boulevard and entrance to the site, which the entrance, the curb cut off of Oviedo Boulevard, is quite abrupt and easy to pass up if you don't notice it. So, in a sense, the architecture is not only evocative of the values of the practice, it is a significant wayfinding component when it comes to accessing the site. So with respect to the west elevation, which you see here on the right board, and then also in the upper two images on the screen, we wanted not only to identify the practice, which states Your Oviedo Dentist across the building elevation against a high-contrast background, we wanted to curve the, or, excuse me, wrap the transparency of the north elevation, which would be off to your left in this image, around to the west to signify entrance. And because of the narrow dimension of the site, one must be pulled into it to gain access to the entrance, which meant that the entrance and everything needed to be pulled a significant distance back from the street just due to that unique site geometry. So we are using the architecture to identify the practice, to assist in wayfinding and to guide you to the building entrance in as simple of a way as possible, given the site characteristics and unique geometry of the site. In addition to an architecture that's modern, that is crisp and clean, we did introduce warm materials, such as the piece of wood that just fell from that easel right there, travertine stone, which, there is a chunk of that on the lower left, which has been placed on the west elevation to mitigate the amount of stucco that is on that facade, and additionally along the north elevation to identify the entrance to the building. The wood runs horizontally to emphasize the horizontal nature of the facade and the clean, crisp lines of the glazing and the building roof line. Also, the amount of transparency is significant on the north elevation because this is critical to the interior environment. We wanted to pull in as much natural light as possible, and north light is the best light, and it's free, so let's take advantage of it. The landscaping and site design is complementary to the architecture and supports that experience that begins at the street. We wanted the landscaping, and we collaborated with the landscape designers to create a landscape that would, in addition to the building architecture, support and kind of sculpt and create your path to the entrance to the building. There's been a tremendous amount of intimate collaboration with city staff in this project. It's been incredibly helpful, and I believe we have all arrived at a better building because of it, and I'm incredibly grateful for that process. This is the most amount of dialogue we've ever had with the municipality, and it's been incredibly helpful, not only to create a better building, but also understand the guidelines and the design standards of the City of Oviedo, so we appreciate that. If there are any questions about the building architecture or site design, I'm here and available to answer those.
Anybody have any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
I have no request to speak forums on this item. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to address council? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council. Just need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 3422-17.
Motion, do I have second?
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Pollock, you've got the floor.
I think it's a, I really think it's a great-looking project. It's a different type of architecture than we're used to in Oviedo, but it's, you know, it definitely, it looks great.
For clarification, Mr. Motioner, I'm sorry, did you approve the resolution 3422-17?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Now, Jerry, in that resolution, it includes the development order and the design order? Do we need to motion those individually?
Yes, it does include both.
It does include, we approve the resolution, we approve everything. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Pollock.
That's all I had to say.
Councilmember?
Well, first off, I just wanted to disclose that I did run into the builder after hours, so my decision tonight will be based purely on whatever's happening right here, the information provided to us. Architecturally speaking, one deviation is all that's requested. It looks like mitigation has been met, so from a quasi-judicial standpoint, thumbs up. My question really goes to the site deviations, and is it really necessary to have that high? We've been asked for up to 100% from one person, and here we've got, I want to say it's up to 66% on some, and it does look narrow. Is there no way around increasing the buffers? Just want to make extra sure. And I guess that's a question for Dr. Korea.
So we sat down with the applicant, and we reviewed all the deviations and tried to minimize the number of deviations. As the architect pointed out, the site is very challenging because it's narrow and These are the deviations that they are requiring, requesting for the buffer width. In green, you have a portion of a buffer that abuts, the property abuts residential. And because of the vehicular use of the parking spaces, our code requires a larger buffer. So actually, they are maintaining the same buffer along, but in that area, they would require deviation, they were requesting a deviation. So it's actually only on that portion of the north buffer. The same thing is happening on the south. The purple one is, again, a deviation because they are abutting the Oviedo Terrace town homes. But as you can see, and they already showed over there, the town homes, the town homes are preset back from the property line, so there is on their side some additional buffer requirements. So we didn't think that was a negative impact on the south property. And again, the yellow is again because they have vehicular use over there, the code requires a larger buffer from vehicular use abutting residential use. We thought this was the minimum for them to be able to use the site. We tried, and the buffer composition comes, derives from the reduction on the width. So they have, they are also requiring some tree mitigation, the number of medium trees to be reduced, but they are also mitigating by providing a larger caliber of trees. So we thought that was the minimum that was requested to attend, to meet the parking standards and for this site to work. But it was really the geometry of the site that imposed those conditions.
So at those three different locations, would there then be, are there walls from both the adjoining properties because of their uses and also internal to this site? Because it looks like there's sort of a buffer wall going on.
There is a retaining wall on the south property, on the Oviedo Terrace, they already have that. And they are proposing a wall on the south, and we have, if we could go back to the elevations, there is a south elevation.
Which attachment is this in?
Would be attachment four. If you look for the south elevations, you'll show here, they have along the south line of the property line facing the building, they have some walls and landscaping buffering the offices, the medical offices. We don't, the code doesn't require a wall between, in this area, because they are all mixed-use zoning district, but the code requires the buffers, the buffer widths.
So buffer widths being vegetative to an extent, or is this isn't going to be lined with bushes or anything? Everybody just really close between...
Oh, no, these have canopy trees and medium and small-sized trees. They are only requesting deviations for the medium-sized trees. They are providing the canopy trees, and they are providing the mitigation... They are providing the canopy trees, and they are providing the mitigation for those medium-sized trees, and they are not, they are providing some of the trees. So they are requesting, I think, 50, let me see the numbers.
It looks like for every tree that's not being planted or not included in the buffer, that's being paid into the tree bank, so somewhere else in Oviedo, those trees will exist.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's important.
Yeah. But they are also providing larger caliper trees, and the area will be landscaped, will be heavily landscaped, but they could not, because of the widths that they were reducing, they could not plant all the trees that the code requires.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Councilman Britton?
Not really, I just want to say, I think it's a unique architecture. That doesn't mean it's bad, it could be good, you know? We don't want to be a city where everything looks alight. I think you did a good job fitting it where you had to put it, and that doesn't look like that was an easy task. I also did meet with, or have spoken to Paul Doddard on this, and had no bearing on this, but I think the, if I understand, weren't the deviations originally a lot higher than this, in the original cement?
Originally, they submitted deviations to the architecture that were higher, and we ended up sitting with them again, and then now they just reduce to one deviation to the fenestration, and that was because of the function of the rooms behind the wall.
And let me make sure I understand, the deviations, the percentages are in widths, but it's really for short lengths?
Yes.
Is that what the concept was up there? So we've got a eight-foot length where you've got a rather large deviation, but it's only for a short distance?
Yes, that's why we wanted to show the graphs that shows that just a portion of the buffer.
Okay. I think it'll fit in well in the community, and I wish you well.
Deputy Mayor, anything?
Just a couple of quick questions. Dr. Korea, so can you clarify for me, so there is no wall between the public townhomes and this development, except for some landscaping, correct?
The townhomes are providing some retaining wall, so they already have...
A retaining wall on the south?
On their north, on this south, yeah.
Okay, so they're building their own wall there?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I would have to agree with Councilman Pollak and Councilman Britton, it is a very unique building, something that we are not used to in Oviedo. It looks fine, it's got all the different, what's strange for me is that it has all the different treatments we want, but there's so much white in it. You know, that's what I'm saying, I know that's kind of like an ivory on the awning, and it's almost like...
It's a dentist's shop.
It's a tooth.
Looks like a tooth.
Yeah, I mean, it just, but that is, that is that French vanilla stone, there just seems to be a lot of it. But you know what? I agree, it's unique. The service it's going to provide to the community, I'm good. I was just taken, it was just surprising, we've never seen this before, so this is the first time, and you know, the French vanilla, there just seems to be a lot of it, but like you just said, maybe it's good for teeth, so good luck, march on, and we're good.
I wish my teeth were that white.
Actually, the original...
I bet you can fix that, right?
The original project had more wood.
Right.
But to comply with the code, they replaced the wood with stone.
Yeah.
So before, there was more contrast, actually, but...
Just how like we did in Oviedo on the park, with the strands, we got all these different things, and they're very noticeable. This has many different things, but they're not as noticeable. It's interesting, but it looks fine, and it'll be a great position for the city, so wish you guys good luck, and the mayor's in the first place.
All right, well, I had the pleasure of meeting with Paul and the doctor, and you know, I must say, the same, I had the same concerns, and it was unique to the city, it wasn't necessarily not an attractive building, it's very attractive, it's just unique to Oviedo, but when you visit the office and you get a feel for the atmosphere that they're creating, it makes sense. I can see why you're building this kind of building, and it's going to be very, we're going to be very proud to have it in the city. The buffer issue on the site plan, I really think, you know, some of that's been overblown, you know, as usual on social media. Simply put, as Councilman Britton pointed out, and even Councilmember Sladek, this is very small little areas. And then when you actually look at the site plan, and you see where the deviation and the placement of the building, I mean, kudos to everybody involved, because those deviations are by a road going into a townhome, and then the townhomes, you put the pond as their backyard. So I mean, it was, it was a great use of an unusual parcel of land. So I really think that, you know, at the end of the day, a lot of work has been put into it, and when you're, when you're looking at creating something as unique as this, now this is for the architect, and I know Dr. Korea probably had a hand in it, and certainly everybody else, but to create something as unique as this that meets our code with one little deviation on the flat front because of the placement of operating rooms, I think that's outstanding. So it just shows that all those years of work to our staff who put this code together, that the code is working, it's allowing flexibility in design, it's bringing out better design, it's bringing out better use of materials. Travertine, I mean, you know, who would have thought, you know, travertine walls, Amazon stone, all the granite. The shopping center on the corner, Stonehill Plaza, not one deviation, 70,000 feet, you know, the code is working, so kudos to everybody for sitting down and minimizing the original amount of deviations. I know at the beginning, there were a lot. And we do greatly appreciate helping us preserve the code and prove that we can work within the code and still create something that's so unique and so beautiful, so great job to all. Is there anything else from anyone?
I just wanted to state for the record that I did have a meeting with the applicant as well, and, but everything, my opinions are all based on this meeting tonight.
Great. One more time, anything for the good of the order? I can't see Megan, sit back. Nope, okay, all righty.
We're planting the trees, I'm happy.
All righty, well then, the motion on the table is to adopt as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five oh. Great job, everyone, congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck. You know, they started in the small little office in the corner in the Publix Plaza, next to, next to Publix, the Alephaya Publix. They're in a little tiny office, then they took the old Blockbuster building, which, if you haven't been in, I was, I was very impressed when I came in. I mean, it's quite the design to this.
Thank you.
So, great job.
Thank you.
Oops, closed my agenda by mistake. I don't think I need it anymore. Nope, we have no discussion items this evening. So first up is Mr. Boo.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilman McFarley introduced him, Mr. Kuschi, who is the IT director, that's what Brian had listed, but I wanted to thank you and Mr. Cobb for letting me serve you in this capacity tonight.
He did excellent. If I was Brian, I'd be worried.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and great job to all. We certainly hope Mr. Cobb is feeling better, because nothing worse than not feeling well, and for the last couple of weeks, he hasn't, so. Mr. Groot, you're up.
How can I see it, Mr. Mayor?
All righty, then we're on to me. I'll hit, I think the three things I'm going to hit might be what's on everybody's report, but I'll just knock them off real quick. I know I mentioned it earlier, the funeral today for Lieutenant Sashi was, you know, that was a tough one. I mean, one of our own, 16 years serving us, 25 years serving Orlando, that was a man's man, a gentleman. Firefighting was his life, his family was his life, what we learned today, and you know, Tim will be sorely missed. I just have to say to the public, if you run into any of our firefighters anywhere, they are heartbroken. So, you know, give them all a hug and give them your sympathies. It was very difficult to see our team down there today and the emotions that they were going through. Cheering for Caitlin was last weekend over at the 5K over at the park. Drew, I got to tell you, she, as always, they did a great job, they had about 1,200 runners out there, and then the event seemed to be going along real well, kids were playing everywhere, so kudos to Denise and...
I actually preferred the two-and-a-half mile course than the three-mile course.
That's right, Drew. Yeah, that 3.1 was tough, but, what was that one that we ran that was two and a half? Which one was that?
Ah, I forget one.
One of the 5Ks, you sent us all the wrong direction.
The healthy semino, the healthy...
Yeah, you sent us the wrong direction, you only got, you only got two and a half miles out of it. I agree, Councilman, that one was better. Bacon Bourbon and Blues, Drew, I mean, it was set up great, everything was awesome, the bands were great, the noise carried, I guess if we can just look into that as best as we can do, we would greatly appreciate it, and I'm sure those residents who live in and around it would appreciate it. I know it's very hard to control how sound carries, I know Chief has a decibel meter or something on his phone, maybe we'll just put him at the top of the hill and see what's going on. Upcoming on the 27th, correct Drew? May 27th, we have the Memorial 5K, 7:30 in the morning is the start time. So put that in your calendar, 7:30 start, and that one will be 3.1 miles? You sure?
Yes.
All righty, that'll be awesome, can't wait for it. You should come out, they're a lot of fun. Your wife was there cheering for Caitlin?
No, she didn't. She didn't work the nation.
That's true.
She was the main...
All righty, well, that is the end of my report, I'll turn it over to Councilman Pollak.
I have the, many of the same things on my list, the...
I did.
The...
Banned it, you're going first.
The service today for Lieutenant Sax...
Sax.
Sax was just heartbreaking, I mean, it was very emotional for everybody there, and it was really tremendous to see all the support of all the neighbors' fire departments show up and come out to support them as well. Also, one thing I had on my list that wasn't on the mayor's was, this weekend, they had, over at the Pregnancy Crisis Center, they're going to be working on their mobile unit. They had a display of one that's over there, but they're actually raising funds, and they're almost completed with their funds to put a new one together. So it's, you know, they're trying to meet a need in areas that are, that are not met right now, so that's all I had.
All righty, Deputy Mayor, you're up.
I think you guys all hit it well, and I will just echo, I just want to send my best to the whole fire department, and as the mayor so well put it, that was, that was really hard. I mean, anybody that knew Tim Saxey knew that this was an incredible guy, and to just lose him like that, I mean, these guys, it stung them all, I mean, the whole service, I mean, your throat is just tightened up, and you see Chief White up there, you know, he held it together for the most part, and then at the end, you know, he just lost it.
The last couple of sentences.
Last couple of sentences, he lost it, but you know, that was a, I forgot if it was maybe Gary or one of the firefighters put an email, you know, that was a hero, you know, that was one of these guys that would just be there for you all the time, so you know, to all of those guys, you know, they are brothers, I mean, they are literally brothers.
Tim was in Orlando, didn't he?
Yeah, born in Orlando, so you know, like one of you guys just said, you see one of these guys, just wished him well, so, but the one good thing is they're back on the job tonight, and that's the way Tim would have wanted them to do, go out there and, you know, take care of the city, so you know, it's always tough, I hope we never have to go to another one of them, so Chief, same with your guys, you know, tell them to take care out there, you know, we're with them always in spirit when they're out there, but that was a tough one, so we wish them all well tonight.
That final call was, I lost it on that one, that was brutal.
Councilmember Sladek, you're up.
Tough act to follow on that, but getting more practical, on the golf cart issue, Mr. Groot had sent around what Sanford had done, and it looks like the police department is able to do a safety study for us. Is that something that you feel like you could do?
I'm taking it a little step further to make sure. Right now, I'm waiting for, one of our traffic consultants is supplying me with a golf cart, for lack of a better word, manual for streets. I'm waiting for that to come to me, it should be here within the next couple of weeks, and that's something we'll review and we'll go from there.
All right, cool, thank you. And I tagged you in a little bit on what Bob had said, if anybody needs a pregnancy test in Oviedo, you don't have to wait for the mobile unit, you can like show up at the intersection of 434 and Alephaya, and if you don't realize that there's something like that around, you might not know that that service is available to you, so now you know.
434 Magnolia.
Forty, yeah, did I not say that? 434 and Magnolia, so not, what did I say?
434 and Alephaya.
Oh, no, no, yeah. I thought I said a different cross, you know, send it to somebody's house, but it's Mini Means's old house, for anybody who's been around that...
For anyone who knows, it's George Means's house.
Yeah.
George Means's old house.
Raggedy old George Means.
Remember when he used to drive around the city in that little black car, and all you saw was his hat? Those were the days. All righty, Councilmember Britton, you're up.
Real quick, again, my condolences to Tim's family, I'll just share with you that when we moved here in the early 90s, he had a well digging business.
He didn't talk about it today.
I still have the receipt, he put a well in my yard for $100 that I still use to this day to water my grass with.
Wow.
And I got the receipt, and it says on there, if this doesn't work, I'll come back and put another one in. It was just the kind of guy he was, so I'm going to miss him, I really enjoyed this friendship over the years. And I do have to say that I'm going to be going out of town for an extended period in June and July, I'll be back intermittently, but I'll be at the June 5 council meeting, but I will not be able to, and I'm really sorry that I'm going to miss the council meeting on the 7th, because we didn't have one when we were supposed to host in May, and so I feel kind of bad not to be there in June at the Sanford meeting, so if someone could sub for me at that, give them my...
Send out an email, and we'll get somebody to go.
Okay, and I have the bank statement, if you want, I can give you the bank statement.
What, do you have $624 in?
I've actually written two checks in the last month, so there's changes to it.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All righty, hearing none, we have future meeting dates of Monday, May 22nd, 2017, that is 6:00 PM, that will be a budget work session. Regular meeting on June 5th and June 19th at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers. Then we have the budget work session on a Wednesday night, that is a different night for us, but that'll be Wednesday, June 21st, 6:00 PM here in City Hall in the city council chambers. With that being said, it is approximately 20 minutes of eight, and the meeting is adjourned.